All right, good evening, everyone. It is 6:30 PM. Today is Thursday, September 21st. This is a regular meeting of the Oland Tangee Schools Board of Education. I'll call the meeting to order. Mr. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Lester?
Here.
Dr. Dabberco?
Here.
Dr. Wise?
Here.
Dr. Wallach?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here. All right, please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's move to the approval of the agenda. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Some move. Do you have a second, please?
A second.
Any discussion on the agenda? All right, seeing none, please call the roll.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
All right, I'll go to the board presence report. So I've got a couple of things and I'll open it up to members if they have anything to share. So one, so tonight, you know, we're gonna have a student presentation on the Smart Mailbox, which we're excited to see. But we're also gonna have a presentation of state report card by Ms. Kenny, which, as we think about, you know, consistent themes across Oland Tangee, it's about academic excellence and financial responsibility. So in the treasures report, we're also gonna talk about some financial responsibilities. So in terms of academic excellence, you know, the report cards came out. We've got five stars and Ms. Kenny's gonna kind of double-click into that and give us some additional detail, but you know, it's a, it's been a consistent level of high performance on the state report card. It's not self-reported. It's reported by the Department of Education, just like, you know, last time we were here, we're talking about US News and World Report and what we ranked there. Again, it's not self-reported. It's reported by an independent agency. They collect data, they do their own assessment. So two different bodies doing work to show that we consistently deliver outstanding results, both in the classroom and outside the classroom. In terms of fiscal responsibility, some of the context, and again, Mr. Jenkins is gonna get into more specific detail, but Delaware County's going through its tri-annual reevaluation of properties. And, you know, as anyone could attest, evaluations have been very strong. And so we have an opportunity to talk about potentially rolling back some millage, particularly relative to debt service, not operating, but debt service, as a way of showing that, you know, even though we could collect the village, because evaluations have changed so much, it may be more prudent to the taxpayer and prudence to the community to roll that back a little bit and, you know, be really financially, fiscally responsible both to the district as well as to the taxpayers. So we'll be having a, kind of an in-depth discussion about that during the treasures report with Mr. Jenkins. So again, academic excellence, fiscal responsibility, two key themes that we continue to not just talk about, but deliver. So it should be a good discussion tonight. So that'll open up to any other board members for you?
Just a brief update. We had the mental health committee meeting last night. As we've talked about in our prior discussions, we had an ad hoc committee that presented the recommendations in July. That is now moving toward a full board committee, which we worked on the charter last night. We hope to bring that in October for full board consideration. But we talked about sort of goals and where that will be going. So look forward to presenting here in another month.
Excellent. What else? Oh, good.
I do.
All right.
I do.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead. Sorry. I'm used to going this way.
Well, and Dr. Wallach can share as well. And I don't know if you guys also went to Heritage this week to talk to the third graders?
Oh, did you?
Yes, yes. We do that just about every year. So that was a great opportunity to be able to talk to them about elective officials.
Yeah.
Did you do Teacher Academy?
I got to do Teacher Academy a couple of weeks ago. And then, so that was fun, but this was, this was a blast too, because the third grade is a special year. Oh, man, third graders. I think the one kiddo in the classroom, his whole takeaway was, so you like third graders the best? That was his big takeaway. But it was, it was great. So them getting an understanding of what various elected officials, what role they play in the community and how even different agencies work together and such. So that was fun.
All right. It's good to get in the classroom and kind of feel it. It's good. All right, so thank you for that and thanks, everybody. We'll now go to our first presentation. So we've got the Smart Mailbox presentation.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Wisnewski and I'm one of the gifted specialists at Berkshire Middle School. One of the enrichment opportunities we provide for students is invention convention. Student inventors identify a problem and then develop a real-world solution as individuals or in teams of two to four students. At my building, I use Schoology to push out content and material and information and resources, but then I also schedule times to meet with them individually, one-on-one during the school day as needed throughout the process. Students are, our inventors are scored on a four-to-six-minute video presentation, a prototype of their invention, a display board, and an inventor's log, which documents their journey using a STEM design cycle framework. Inventors like Vinoda, who is with me today, may have multiple projects going on within the same year due to the way our local, state, and national competitions are spaced out. So this past summer, for example, Vinoda presented her fifth-grade project, or the project she started in fifth grade at Nationals, and then a few weeks later presented the project that she worked on as a sixth grader with me at our state competition. So without further ado, I'm gonna turn things over to our inventor, Vinoda Thea Garajon, to share her award-winning Smart Mailbox.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Vinoda Thea Garajon, and I invented the Smart Mailbox. I'm in seventh grade and I go to Berlin Middle School. The problem that this invention solves is that packages are getting lost as it gets delivered to the incorrect address. My family had faced a tough situation where we were supposed to receive a package that contained lifesaving medicine delivered to our address. But unfortunately, it was delivered to the incorrect address. We had tough times tracking down where the package had went. Finally, the seller had to reship the package. After knowing about this incident, I knew we wanted to solve this problem. Some major impacts is that there's frustration for the buyer not getting their package on time. And packages containing lifesaving medicines can cause a severe impact. There's a financial loss to the seller, buyer, and consumer, and there's an environmental impact. In the US itself, 21.6 billion parcels haven't shipped in 2021, which is approximately 683 parcels per second. This volume will double in two years, so imagine the amount of packages that are being misdelivered also doubling as well. 1.7 million packages go missing every day, adding up to more than $25 million worth of lost goods and services. So this solution, how it works is that there's a QR code on your mailbox that has your green highlight. First, you scan the QR code on your mailbox, then the QR code on your package. If both QR codes match, it shows a green highlight, say true, if not, a red highlight, say false. Right now, all we're doing is currently scanning the tracking number on the package. And it says it has been delivered. But how do you know whether it's been delivered to the incorrect address or the correct address? That's where my solution comes in handy. You scan the QR code on your mailbox, then the QR code on your package. If both QR codes match, it shows true with a green highlight, if not, false with a red highlight. Now that I know this package was delivered to the incorrect address, I can make sure it's received by the correct person. Since nine out of 10 packages don't fill your mail and have to go to the door, we also have an additional QR code on your door. So the cost is that the hardware costs zero dollars because you can use existing handled device. The software is $10,000 because you would have to add the QR code on your package and create the software on the handled device. The QR code sticker would cost 0.550 cents, which is $1 per house because you need two QR code stickers per house. This is in total $10,001 to create the solution. The benefits are that the financial savings are $500 million per year, and there's on-time delivery and increased customer satisfaction. There's reduced environmental impacts, reducing the amount of carbon dioxide emitted because by tracking and tracing down where the package had went, this process emits carbon dioxide. And it opens job opportunities for people with disabilities. So I presented to the USPS. I submitted the proposal to them, to the postmaster of Central Ohio, Mr. Eric Gilbert. We went there multiple times and gotten feedback because I wanted to take the solution to the next level and I wanted to make sure the solution was implemented. I'd also presented to the CIO of USPS and gotten their feedback as well. After this presentation, after a few weeks, they're gonna get back to us, reaching out with the results of what they're thinking and how we can implement the solution. So here's a certificate that I'd been, that I received from them for the presentation. And here's some of the words. So first, here's a resolution that I got from the Ohio Senate. This shows that they accept this as a solution that you can use in the real-world time. And then here's the copy of the real certificate that USPS had given me for the presentation. Here's a reward that I won in the state competition, which is where everything started to evolve, and that's how I won the Globos, and I won first place in the Globos representing for the United States. So here's a timeline. So first, it started out in fifth grade, where it submitted the proposal to my gifted coordinator, and they had moved me on to the school round. Next, I went to the state round where I won the industry award for government and safety. In June 2023, I won two awards at the US Nationals, representing for Ohio. I won third place and the inclusion award. In July 2023, I received my first provisional patent for my solution. And most recently, in August 2023, representing the US, I won in Worlds of Invention and Invention first place. So that's the Senate resolution. Thank you. Thank you. This is the solution where they accepted my solution, and that's the copy that I had shown you guys. And that's pretty much it. I'm open to any questions or comments.
Have you booked your spot on Shark Tank yet? You're ready, you're ready.
I actually entered the competition because I love to watch Shark Tank and all the pitches, the royalties. To me, it's just like very interesting. So I was actually like, I really wanna go in Shark Tank. Yeah.
But Vinoda's presentation vastly exceeds many of the ones I've seen on Shark Tank. So well done, kiddo. If you're familiar with the concept of imposter syndrome, right, where I'm just sitting here going, why, I'm really not the, I know I'm not the smartest person in the room, but now I really, really am. I got knocked down several pegs. So I am very impressed by your public speaking abilities in addition to your innovation and creativity and being a problem solver. So bravo, kiddo.
Thank you.
Yeah, great job.
Very nice.
For those of you that are just watching this at home, she's doing this without notes, right? She's up here presenting with eye contact. And, you know, it was interesting. I went to curriculum night for my kids and the kid, science teacher was talking about they're, they're using some pitch ideas in their, you know, in their curriculum to try to do it. And said, it's not just, it's not just enough to make something. You also have to be able to sell it and to be able to, to talk about the needs. So great job on that. I mean, that, it's really impressive. We can get up, you're making eye contact, you're speaking really passionately about it. We all believe in it, right? I mean, it's, it's very clear just because of how, what a great job you do with that. I do wanna highlight that she said she got her first provisional patent. I think there's gonna be a lot more of those coming down the line, so.
Yes.
Really excited to see the work that you're doing and can't wait to just see how it continues to progress in the future.
Thank you.
Just a few notes here. First of all, thank you for your whole team that supported you. Kids do best when they can just attack a problem, and they usually find better solutions than we can find. So thank you very much for doing that and for making this job the coolest in the world to watch you show that off. I do have one request. Can you please take on the next task of Central Ohio morning traffic? Because that is a pressing problem. Please consider with consultation of your support team, okay? Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Fantastic.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you guys for taking your time and listening to my presentation. And thank you to my supporters, Ms. Wisnewski, for kinda helping me along the journey, and to my dad for helping me do the software and program everything. So thank you.
Okay. Next up is Ms. Kenny. It's a tough act to follow, Ms. Kenny.
I'm not sure I can follow that. Well, thank you for having me tonight. It is tough to follow such an amazing student and very, very impressive. But I'm honored to share the results of our Ohio State report card that was released last week on September 14th. One thing to consider as we're talking about the report card is that, you know, one of our values is that we do always strive to get better and that the state report card is just one of the ways that we measure all of the amazing things that are happening in our district. But we are fortunate that we have a lot to celebrate, and that is thanks to the dedication of all of our families, our students, and all of our teachers. So to get into it, this is a snapshot of the state report card. We can see that we do have a five-star overall rating. And then we're gonna spend some time tonight going through each of those six components, talking a little bit about what they mean, how they're calculated, and what the results for us are actually telling us. So first, and again, this is new this year, is that every district and school did receive an overall rating. The overall rating is comprised of five of the six components, which are achievement, progress, gap closing, early literacy, and graduation. Those are all rated slightly differently. The achievement and progress measures are weighted a little bit more heavily than the gap closing, early literacy, and graduation. This component can be rated one to five stars, and this is the only one where we can earn half-stars as well. You can see that the district, we did receive an overall five-star rating, which means that we are significantly exceeding state standards. You can also see in the building data, the distribution, that all of our schools were at least exceeding or significantly exceeding those state standards. Couple of highlights or statistics is that we were one of 75 districts in the state to earn a five-star overall rating. And then there were four others in Central Ohio who did as well. I guess progress jumped over achievement. I think these are a little out of order, so I'll jump back and forth. But next is achievement. The achievement measure is one that we are familiar with and the one that has probably been around the longest, which measures the academic achievement of all of our students. So it's looking at what performance level our students achieved on a state assessment, whether that's an Ohio State test, the alternate assessment for students with significant cognitive disabilities, and even some AP assessments are included in that as well now. Our performance index this year was 103.3, which was one point higher than last year, and we are ranked 34th in the state in our performance index, which is up two points from last year. Fourth in Central Ohio, and that did earn us a five-star rating. So in order to earn five stars in the achievement component, you have to have at least 90% of the maximum performance index score, which varies from year to year, and that is that the max score is gonna be the average of the top 2% of the state. So we are well over that, that 90% threshold. With, if, when we look at larger districts as well, so districts that are over 10,000 students, we had a higher PI that was six points higher than the closest district to us. So of the larger districts, we are well outperforming in achievement. And then you can see our elementary school ratings there as well.
And the PI number has changed as the measures have changed, is that correct?
There's.
Like the absolute score versus?
Yes, so the absolute score used to be 120, and they realized that that really was unattainable. We're never gonna have 100% of our students at that advanced level. So that's where they now are gonna take the average of the top 2%. And they do the same thing for the schools. They take all of the schools and the top 2% of schools, that becomes the maximum performance index.
Mr. O'Brien, can we do questions per slide or?
Yeah, whatever you want.
I'm looking to see if you're like queuing for the next slide and then I'll jump in or?
Go ahead.
So why is it important to understand that there's a difference between smaller districts and larger districts? And I'm kinda thinking about like composition and things like that.
Yeah, I mean, I think the district composition can, can make a difference. Also, when we have so many schools, that there's the opportunity that there could be a lot of varying experiences for students. But when we look at with all of our schools and all of our students, this, I think, is testament that they're all are receiving an incredibly high-value education.
And say that thing again, you said, of schools larger than, how many students?
Larger than 10,000.
So basically, any district with more than one high school, there's no one close to us.
True. Okay, we're gonna jump around a little bit. So. For the progress measure, progress are also, a lot of people talk about it with growth or you hear value added. Those are all kind of synonymous terms. So this is gonna be measuring student growth on the Ohio State test. So if we think about, kind of conceptually speaking, what is this actually measuring? It's looking at our students kind of maintaining their place in the distribution of students from one year to the next. If they maintain that distribution, that would be what we would consider a three-star rating, or they're meeting the expected growth expectation across the state. So they're achieving very similar to like students. To get to that four or five star, we're looking at our students are increasing their place in that growth distribution. And the two and the one stars are the students are not meeting that expected growth, or they're kind of losing some ground compared to like peers. In order to get to the five stars, so four and five stars are both significant evidence that we are exceeding that growth expectation. To get to the five stars, we also look at what they call an effect size, which is going to be the magnitude of growth. So if we look at our data on progress this year, we are a four-star district overall, which means there is significant evidence that our students are exceeding the growth expectation. We just didn't quite meet that threshold by a large enough magnitude. So for a district, we need an effect size of 0.1. We had an effect size of 0.09. So we are right there. We're real close. Last year, we had an effect size of .11. So our data is very similar. We're just, we just didn't quite hit that magnitude. The other thing to consider is that progress this year is up to two years. So it's, this past current year was weighted a little bit more heavy, so it was kind of two-thirds weight. And then last year's data was included in this as well, weighted at a one, kind of one-third of that. And then you can see our school distribution there as well.
Can we talk about how the state calculates this? So correct me if I'm wrong, but the state makes a test, the state gives us a window when we have to administer it. The state tells our teachers what they have to say when they administer it.
True.
The state scores the test. Is there any room in there for us to add our little two cents in about the test, or is it all from the state?
It is all from the state.
What happens to teachers, educators, administrators who don't follow the rules on something as simple as administering the test?
We have to report anything that is abnormal to the state of Ohio. There are investigations done. It's reported to our human resources department. I mean, it can result in a teacher losing their license.
Which is really bad.
Really bad.
So to the progress measure, this is the only metric that, we don't really know all of their math, right?
True.
This is a proprietary formula, which is contrary to research. When you publish something, you have to publish your formulas, your data's available so that people can look at your math and say, wait a minute, you've missed something. And that happens all the time. But this, we can't look at the progress measure. So where does that? I don't wanna ask you a leading question about, we can check the math on achievement, right?
True.
And we can say, okay, they've got it right here. But we can't do that for progress.
We cannot. One, it's the complexity of the statistical measure. Like you said, we don't have all that information, and we don't have all of the data from all of the other districts. We have our own district data, which we're not able to calculate this value-added progress in that way.
And we can't look at their assumptions, like you just mentioned, they're going two years back. There's a whole bunch of assumptions with how you'll wait, what the expected growth could be, and we just don't know everything they put into the formula.
True. And this, oh, go ahead.
So with that, I mean, even if we got the highest in every single thing, we're still always looking to do better, right?
Always.
We're always still looking to improve. With something like this, where we don't really have access to their data, how do we, how do we learn from that? Like, how do, how do we take those lessons and try and build upon it? Can you talk a little bit about the challenge there?
Yeah, absolutely. So right now, we don't have a lot of the details. What we will get released in probably middle of October is what we call EVOs, which we'll be able to dig into the data a little bit more. So we'll be able to see where are the relative strengths, where are subjects' grade levels, specific subgroups of students who are doing really well, and then what do we think contributed to that, so we can continue to do that. And then where are there still areas where maybe students aren't growing in the way that we want them to? And what are we gonna do different and create a plan? So when that is released in October and we're able to look at that building level data, I meet with a lot of buildings. We kind of dig into it and say, where are some areas that we can continue to get better? And then in November, or usually early November, the teacher-level value-added will be released. So then teachers who receive value-added data for their own individual classrooms will be able to dig into that and do some reflective exercises to figure out, what did I do last year that was very effective for certain types of students? And what maybe do I need to, to change and find some new strategies for?
Can teachers review the test so that, you know, any teacher wants kids to grow, right? Can they review the test with the students and say, this is what you did the best on, this is what you did the worst, so that they can use it formatively to impact instruction?
No, not to that level.
So then, at some point in October, each school will have their scorecard published? By school or no?
So some of the data is completely public. And so we, we, as a district, are able to log in and dig a little bit deeper into it. But yeah, they'll be able to see building level-specific and dig into specific grade levels and subject areas.
And then for the schools that are kind of two and three stars, do we then start to build kind of continuous improvement plans to make sure that we start to get those to where we want them to be?
Absolutely. Yeah, 'cause right now, again, when it's pretty high level, it's hard to know what, what does that goal need to look like? But yeah, those are conversations that we'll have. Again, the three stars is still meeting expected growth, but obviously, we want our kids to be exceeding. So where are the areas that we can, can improve?
So am I hearing you right, that you don't use a set curriculum? You'll have to adjust, 'cause some kids might need more support in a certain area, and then other kids might need extension in another area. So you can't just give every child the same curriculum. You have to, you have to make adjustments based on what people need. Is that safe to say?
Yeah, we've gotta look at our curriculum. Are we, are we teaching the right standards to the right depth and also our instructional strategies? What do individual students need in order to maximize their learning?
It's what we call an equity of experience.
Yeah, meeting kids' needs rather than?
Right.
Yeah, not a one-size-fits-all.
Absolutely not.
Okay, so moving on to the gap-closing measure, this is our, when we look at a lot of different subgroups. So it's measuring the academic achievement and growth of 10 different specific subgroups from the state. So our district gap-closing measure was another five-star, so significantly exceeding those state expectations. And you can see the building level as well. All buildings were at least exceeding or significantly exceeding the expectations for our subgroups. In the pictures, over off to the right, at the top, those two are looking at the academic achievement of the different subgroups. And ELA is on the left-hand side, and then math is on the right-hand side. The bars are what the subgroup performance index is, and then those red dots are the state goals. So you can see all of our subgroup bars, their achievement is far exceeding what the state goal is. Down below, those two graphics show the growth. Down below, those two graphics show the growth index. So looking at kind of that progress measure for the different subgroups in both ELA and math. And that red line that goes down is going to be what that state goal is. And the state goal is that they are significantly exceeding the growth expectation. So we can see in math that all of our subgroups did meet that, significantly exceeding the growth expectation. And then in ELA, we had three that met it outright, a couple that were close and then a couple areas, again, where we can continue to, to improve. All of the subgroups were at least meeting expected growth. But again, we want to raise it up to that bar so that all of our subgroups are exceeding so that gap in achievement does continue to close for them.
So just a quick question. Any idea like, I'm seeing English, math over and over and over again. We teach other things, right?
We do.
So percentage of what we teach is actually tested?
Pretty small. Because obviously, K-2, we're not testing, a lot of our science and social studies aren't tested. And then if we think of all of the robust electives that we have that really create that incredible opportunities for our students, those things are not reflected on the state report card. Couple other measures with gap closing, we do look at graduation rates. You can see those red dots and all of our bars far exceeding. And then another unique measure in gap closing is for English learners. And so the graphic to the right is not looking at our English learners' achievement in ELA and math, but it's looking at how well are they acquiring the English language on what we call the OWLPA test that they take every year. So again, that red dot is the state expectation and our students are far exceeding that goal, which means that our EL program and our EL teachers, with such an increasing population, are doing an incredible job. Another thing to highlight for our English learners, if we go back to the previous slide, in both achievement and in growth, they were, they met all of those. So they're not only achieving on the ELA and math content test, they are exceeding growth in ELA and math content. And then they are also exceeding in acquiring the English language.
Can you just remind me how many different languages we support?
What is it, 80?
Eighty-one.
I was gonna say, it's 81?
Eighty-one.
So the next measure is early literacy. And this is measuring reading improvement and proficiency kindergarten through third grade. So we did achieve a five-star rating as a district and you can see the building distribution there. There are three pieces that go into this measure. One is proficiency on the reading portion of the Ohio State test for third grade. The second part is going to be promotion to the fourth grade. And then the third piece is going to be improvement. So we're measuring if students who are identified as not on track on a reading diagnostic, if they are moved to on track that following year. That third piece of it, though, is only counted if you have 10% or more of your kindergarteners identified as not on track. So as a district, the only two things that went into this measure for us are proficiency on the third grade Ohio State test in reading and promotion to the fourth grade. I think one highlight to point out here is that we had 100% promotion to the fourth grade. Some may know that the budget bill did allow us to promote students who maybe didn't earn a promotion score. However, prior to that even happening, all of our students earned that on their own. So regardless of what would have happened, we had 100% promotion to the, to the fourth grade and the third grade reading guaranteed.
Thousands of third graders and every single one of them made it.
They would have gone to the fourth grade no matter what, yep. So I think that just speaks to the strength of our literacy program. Graduation, this is going to look at both four and five-year graduation rates. The four-year is going to be weighted a little bit more heavily at 60% and the five-year graduation rate at 40%. But as a district and all of our high schools were all rated in five stars for graduation.
How do they handle the early grads? Does that get counted? We've had a bunch, last three, four meetings, people already eligible for graduation leaving in November, December. How does that show up in this?
I believe they are counted in that four-year cohort.
They are, they're in the cohort.
Yep.
In the four-year cohort.
And the ones that we graduated by August, we graduated a few in the summer. They would have been in the previous cohort, so as long as they graduate by August.
Yep, before the start of school, they're counted. Okay, and then the sixth component, which is not a rated component right now, is the college career workforce and military readiness. So the intent of this is to measure how well our students are prepared for their future opportunities once they graduate from us. The reason that this one is not yet rated is because it's still being developed, so it's not complete. I included a table that kind of shows the pieces of information that are going to go into this component that will be calculated. But you can see in both the status on the report card and the business rules column, many of them say incomplete or pending. Which means that either the state might not be gathering that data yet or they're not ready to report it because they haven't decided how they're going to do that. Even though it is still being developed, they still kind of publish that percentage to, I guess, let us know where we are right now. So with where we are right now, we are at a 66.3%. Again, still incomplete data and we have no idea what that will look like when it is translated into a rated component in stars. But that still is with, at the top, 8.8% of the state. And then the highest percentage of 11 districts who have over 1,200 graduates. So also, looking at those really big districts, we're doing very well comparatively speaking with them.
It's also the best in Delaware County.
Best in Delaware County.
Can you go back one slide, please? So my eyes are bad and it doesn't matter how close you bring it. Incomplete, incomplete, it looks like a lot of those military, they don't, they don't include. It looks like there's some business stuff in there too. Mr. Meyer, you might know this question as well. Would the bridge ed contribute to anything in that category with apprenticeships and stuff like that? Would that help with that?
I think it has the opportunity to create those apprenticeship opportunities for our students or work-based learning. So I think that is an area that we can continue to, to explore and to grow.
And I'm trying to remember, well, from the quality profile, what percent of our kids graduate, I think it's either four or six years from college? Do you remember that?
I think it's like 60, a little over 60%.
Yeah. Eighty percent go on to post-secondary and then within four years, 60.
And I think the state average is like 30.
I mean, with these things, it's, you have to look at it in comparison to peers because it's really misleading on its own. I mean, when I first saw this, I was like, where's this data coming from? But then you look at all of the other districts across the state and you can see that the percentage is basically useless on its own. So I'm glad that you provided that. And if you look at the peers around central Ohio, you see the same, in that same range.
Yep. And that's it, are there any other questions? I'd be happy to answer.
Can I do one more? And stay in your good gr- So just a nuanced question about eighth grade math. About what percentage of our kids in eighth grade do not take the eighth grade math test?
It's about half.
Okay, and what do those kids do? They get a day off and head to the-
They're taking a different test, so they've been accelerated to Algebra I.
Okay, so they don't take the test and we don't know what they would have done on the test. But if, if they're in Algebra I, probably they were accelerated because they might have mastered those skills.
Correct.
So with them not taking it, if they would have, would that, what kind of impact could that have on our eighth grade?
I mean, likely, it would look very similar to the data from seventh grade, sixth grade when we're looking at that whole grade.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
So I'll just say, you know, thank you to, you know, the students, the parents, the staff, the administration. And this is, you know, years of work culminating into a set of tests. And it's, you know, it takes village and this is fantastic performance, you know, across the board. Because the students work hard, the parents are engaged, the staff cares, the administration cares. So it's, it's a really good outcome, really good work.
Thank you.
Mr. Meyer, are these reports?
Yeah, good evening. I want to echo Mr. O'Brien because, first of all, we had a lot to celebrate in the district and many of our schools took time to celebrate on this past Monday, our professional development day because so much work goes into caring for our students, number one, but then also providing an excellent education for our students at every grade level in this district. And again, and I said this before, it just doesn't happen by accident because we're so laser-focused on our alignment in the district horizontally across grade level and then vertically throughout the district. Just, so a lot of amazing work goes on in the district. And again, would be remiss if I didn't thank our community for the tremendous support that they always provide here in Owletangie to help us with the resources that we have to make sure that we're providing the best education that we can for all of our students. And, you know, the, it's important, the school report card, but it's one data point. And before you saw Venoda present. And that's another example of the quality students we have in this district that are able to take the information and knowledge, transfer and apply it into something, you know, that, that they choose, in her case, with the project that she worked on. So just, just amazing work all around from our staff, our students and obviously, for sure, our parents. So with that, we classified staff, we're always on the trail recruiting here. And we've mentioned many times, it's a challenge across the country and for sure in the education space to recruit classified staff. So we held our second test drive a bus interview day. The first one was a success. So this past Saturday, we held our second one and yielded, I think, 10 applicant, or nine applicants at that event. And also, this is due, the county fair is going on this week. So we took our recruiting on the road to the Delaware County Fair this week and set up a booth. So hopefully, we're able to yield some additional applicants or for sure, continue to spread the word of the need that we have in the district. Want to recognize, we held the second and third recognition of Owletangie Education Foundation for Teacher and Employee of the Year at both Berlin High School and Owletangie High School. We will have our fourth and final recognition at Liberty High School when they face Orange on Friday, October 20th. We mentioned this kind of, I think, in the board president report too, but got some photo ops. And so myself, Dr. Wallach, Mr. Lester, and then Mrs. Shape, who's here, OTA president, and also Mrs. Sidoti, principal at Owletangie Academy, had the privilege to talk with our Teacher Academy students. And as you know, that's a really good program here in Owletangie where students who are interested in education get that experience here in high school. And many go on to major in education at the college level and then either come back here or go off to teach. So I thought my session, the students were really engaged and asked some really, really, really good questions. So I'm sure in both of yours, they did as well. They were most interested in how we make decisions on snow days. Came across in your sessions. But really some, I think, intentional questions around the relationship between the superintendent and board and how that impacts the district moving forward. So really great time.
I will say that a lot of the questions I got were on sort of building the community. Like how, how are you working in the community to make things better and with what different groups? I think it aligns with what you're saying.
Yes, yes.
It's really impressive when you get young people that are thinking that way, right? They're not just thinking of their own focus, but how we can work with others to improve the environment. It was, it was great to hear.
Absolutely, absolutely. So-
I'm sorry, can I, I want to piggyback off this too with regards to the Teacher Academy. Because this, I think it opened a door for us to make a little tweak or improvement, even in the way that we collect data. So Ms. Breeze knows what I'm talking about here, I think, that I was kind of curious was, we received the staffing update, is that the last meeting? And we knew how many Owletangie alum have come back and were employed this year, so awesome. But I was then like, well, how many of those also attended Teacher Academy? And we don't have that metric right now. So I think we're looking to now do that moving forwards so that we can find those gaps and say, well, wait a minute, if a person went into education and they're going to major in that, but they didn't do Teacher Academy, what, why, why not? Or, you know, so just allow us to, again, evaluate our programs and understand who's doing what and, and tracking those outcomes even down the road post-graduation. So, sorry.
Yeah, no, no, for sure, thank you. So this week, across the country, a national program, Start with Hello Week. So that has been in our schools, all of our schools this week. The program's to help prevent social isolation, school violence and self-harm. So students were educated and empowered to connect with one another while promoting a sense of belonging. Which, again, there's many, many examples of kindness in our buildings on a daily basis, a weekly basis and across the school year. So again, this week, we're highlighting that within all of our schools. Last night, Dr. Wallach, Ms. Davis, Mr. Swazey, who's here tonight, had the privilege and honor to attend the OSBA Central Conference where retired Sheriff Martin was recognized. He received the Friend of Public Education Award. So he was there with his wife. So it was a great evening where we were able to honor and recognize Sheriff Martin for all of his work and commitment and partnership over the years with Owletangie Schools. So that was a great evening and was super pumped that he received that award and that he was able to attend. Last night, it was a busy night in Owletangie last night. So last night also, so we held our multilingual family night on, at Oak Creek Elementary last night. So nearly 100 families attended. And this is really good because we, we had representative, you can see from the departments down there, from pupil services, technology, curriculum, where EL, where they provided onsite workshops in Power School, Seesaw. So these are a lot of our technology applications that we have in the district. And I know this is really helpful because even as, when new staff come into the district, when we show them all of the things that we have, you know, it's like drinking from a fire hose for our new staff when they come into the district. So really happy that we can do this for our families. And again, it, it's a great program that we have. This past Monday, I mentioned Professional Development Day. And again, it's, it's one of the things I think we do really, really well here in Owletangie. You know, relative to the alignment in the district. Because this really helps with that alignment in a large district, K-12, with really, I think we're up to over 1,800 teachers plus other support staff and of course, 23,000 students. So these types of days really help kind of ground us where we are and then how we're moving forward across the year. And so this year, again, we've talked about this, we're focused on recommitting to the district mission. So all of the buildings held activities and the staff reflected on learning then and learning now. Because we know in education that learners do change as they grow and obviously, as the years change and, and how we can best facilitate that learning in the classroom. So actually, I have some data because we give surveys. So we had 84.32% of our staff responded saying that experience on PD day one were valuable or very valuable to their professional growth, which is important because we want to provide engaging, meaningful professional development for our teachers. And then almost 96% agree that having a stronger understanding of how the Owletangie Foundations in portrait of a learner support their efforts to facilitate maximum learning for every student. And here in Owletangie, we, our Owletangie Foundations, we look at curriculum, assessment and instruction and how all of those tie together in the experiences that we provide in the classroom. And then also, the portrait of a learner, learner dispositions, resilient, purposeful, curious and kind. And how we can continue to promote that with students and as well as staff across the organization. Also, one, the professional development does not just happen with certified staff- Also, one, the professional development does not just happen with certified staff and our teachers, but we have other staff groups that we provide professional development for. So on that day, we had professional development, again, for our Unified Arts teachers, but also transportation, held their first professional development day on Monday. And then we have the intervention aides coming up, I think, on our first, first teacher workday, October 10th. Yeah. Eighteenth, we'll provide professional development for our intervention aides. Okay, so Elementary 17, if you driven by Peach Blown Pious, you can see that the building is going up fast. So we're for sure going to be under roof and you'll be inside for the winter months to finalize that. So with that, we sent out, so the survey will open tomorrow to the entire Olentangie community to submit suggestions to name Elementary 17. So then on October 7th, October 6th, that survey will close. And then on October 12th, I will make building naming recommendations to the Board of Education for your approval. So per our policy 7250, it is the responsibility of the Board of Education to name buildings. And those names will be based on local history or geography and with no directional names, north, south, east, west. So when we compile that list, we will bring that list.
No people, right? We've never named a school, the person's name.
Correct. So then we'll bring that to you and then we'll make that exciting decision on October 12th.
I want to encourage the community to make naming recommendations because it's one of my favorite things, to read the recommendations that people send in.
Yes, yes.
So please, please do that.
And then from there, the Communications Department will create a brand project team of parents and staff who are likely to work and be a part of Elementary 17. And they'll begin that process of selecting the mascot. So that's always exciting too, as they work through that. So that work will take place between, so a little over a month, October 18th and November 22nd. And then it will be an exciting board meeting on December 7th, when we will announce the new attendance boundaries, the elementary school 17 mascot and name. So that'll be here quick, but we'll work through that process and bring those recommendations and be able to do that on December 7th. Wanted to highlight this as well. So Olentangie Bridge Ed State of the Workforce. So last year, we held, held a State of the Workforce, I think it was at Berlin High School, we did it one night. So this year, we're going to break it out to each school community, each high school. So we're going to hold this, hold these on four separate nights. So we'll highlight pathways to the jobs of today and tomorrow. And actually, again, yesterday, attended a session at Columbus State with a lot of information on workforce development, the workforce pipeline, the need of individuals in the pipeline, programs, and various pathways that quite frankly, I'm excited about because it'll, it'll expand opportunities for our students moving forward as they work through high school and into post-secondary educational work. Then, this is the second annual, so all of the homecoming, homecomings are coming up at our high school. So Communications Department, in conjunction with OEF, started this last year as far as getting more support with our alumni. So we will host four alumni gatherings at the September 22nd, the 20th at Berlin, the 29th at Olentangie, 20, also the 29th at Liberty, and then October 13th at Orange High School. I did attend Orange's last year because they invited some of us previous administrators back, so it was nice. Thought they had a really good turnout. So this will be year two, so we are promoting that as well. Action items tonight, we have some certified and classified action items, mostly I think supplementals there. Also, a motion to approve student overnight out-of-state field trips. And then we have a few more students to declare impractical for transportation on the superintendent action items tonight. Moving forward, parent, important dates. So this week, parent-teacher conferences started, so those will happen in all of our buildings throughout the next month of October. Those obviously are always really, really well attended by our parents. So I'd encourage parents to get signed up for parent-teacher conferences, to meet with teachers, to find out for sure what's going on in classrooms and how individual students are doing. And then our next Board of Education meeting, we'll be back here on October 12th at 6:30. Any questions?
All set. Thank you so much, Mr. Meyer.
Thanks.
All right, Mr. Jenkins, the treasurer's report.
Good evening, board members. I just have a couple of items to review. The videos that we have made as a companion to, as I stood here over the board meetings in, I believe, June, July, and August, and talked about the reappraisals. Those videos have been released. I believe the second video has already gone out. The first video went out last week. But essentially what those videos are showing are that most people assume that a 35% increase or a 30% increase in valuation is going to mean a 30 or 35% increase in taxes. And that's not actually true. And so those videos try to break that down. The third video, as you can see, should be going out early next week. So what I wanted to talk about this evening, Mr. O'Brien had brought up some of the items that we're exploring right now with the Delaware County Auditor. And we felt at a meeting about a week, eh, two weeks ago, that we had a confident number. Had another conversation with the auditor today, and I can kind of update at the end of these two slides. But ultimately, we had every reason to believe that for calendar year 2022, we know that the value was just a shade over $5 billion for the footprint that is Olentangie Schools. And in 2022, this is calendar year 2022, we have 7.5 mils that allow us to generate the tax revenue we need to pay our debt service. And for lack of a better word, think about your mortgage in order for us to pay back the mortgage, so to speak, of what we've had to borrow to build our buildings over the years. So that seven and a half mils generates about $38.7 million that we're using every year to pay back both principal and interest on what we've borrowed from investors to be able to construct our facilities. For calendar year 2023, excuse me, the initial property valuation for Olentangie is actually pretty well done by the county auditor, and it's coming in just a shade under 30%. With that, our property values will go to $6.57 billion. So you're talking a $1.5 billion increase, and this isn't just homes, this would be all properties in the district. So because of this increase in property valuation, we had already talked with the county auditor, and we were confident that we could ask the auditor to decrease our bond retirement millage from seven and a half to six and a half. And the mathematics behind that is the last bullet point. Even dropping our millage from seven and a half to six and a half, we would still, using six and a half mils, but 6.57 billion in value, be able to raise $40.3 million to pay our debt service obligations, which is enough. In fact, it, it allows us to meet that obligation in, in a pretty nice fashion. But what, yes.
Where do you go there? And if I'm ahead of myself, let me know. But there's some complicating factors around potential legislation that could make this a little tricky, correct?
And that will be the next two slides. That, that is a what-if scenario. That's exactly right. A one-mil decrease is, is not just small potatoes. We would collect as a district about $6.5 million less from our community. Another way of looking at that, that is a $6.5 million aggregate savings that goes back into the Olentangie community. If you look at it on a micro instead of a macro level, one mil is $35 annually for every $100,000 of home value. So the chart at the bottom, you may kind of do the math real quick and say, well, how does 200,000 not work out to exactly 70? I want to make it real. Most individual homeowners are getting a 12.5% discount. And that discount means 12.5% of your tax bill is paid by the state of Ohio. So if you're not paying the full 100%, and I reflect that 12.5% discount, that's how that $35 is reduced by about 12.5%. And so you can see the chart, most homes in the Olentangie District are in the $400,000 to $500,000 range. Some of them are obviously pushing $600,000 to $700,000, and that would be the annual savings for those taxpayers. Again, that is, that is certainly not something that you could put your kid through college on, but it is a, I believe, a more than moderate give back to our residents and constituents. So what Mr. Dabrico is asking about is there's always a, a factor that gets thrown in that makes things interesting. And that factor is House Bill 187. So you'll see the first two or three bullet points are the same. Undergoing a complete reappraisal in 2023, and we know that in 2022, home values were 5.067 billion, and seven and a half mils will raise around $38.7 million to pay debt service. But as we speak, yesterday, House Bill 187 made its way out of the House Ways and Means Committee and will be going to the whole House floor sometime next couple of weeks, maybe three weeks. It depends on how long it takes for folks to move on this bill. But here's what 187 does. Current law looks at the most recent year of valuation and establishes what the increase or decrease needs to be just based on that year. Now, what, what do I mean by most recent year? There's a, there's a three-year look back. So for 2023 values, we're looking at sales data for 2020, 2021, and 2022. But ultimately, the, the money year, the year that matters, is what's happening only in 2022. There are a lot of folks downtown that feel that that is not right, that that puts way too much weight, all weight, on the most recent year. Now, the only caveat that I will give, that you always have to be careful when you tweak the law, in a period of time when you're dramatically increasing, yeah, I could see someone saying, if you're counting on 2022 as the money year, you're completely putting the most weight on a year where most people would expect their houses to be the highest. But if you flip that around and the economy is going down, you're also going to now do a three-year smoothing average. And the most recent year may be the most indicative of the fact that your home is worth a lot less than what it was three years ago, but what happened three years ago is going to be pulled into that calculation. So there's no perfect solution, but what 187 proposes to do is a three-year average.
So again, just to be clear, so the averaging could lead to the potential of lower collections in a growth environment, but over-collecting in a recessionary environment.
That's correct. That is exactly right. Because it will keep values, in, in a declining environment, it could in fact, keep values higher than what they otherwise might be if the law worked the way it does now. It's exactly right. So we think that a 20 to 25% overall increase would be the result if we smoothed or averaged. That would result in about $6.07 billion worth of value. Because of this, the legislation that we might, you know, try to figure out exactly where to land, we feel like at the low end, we still could seek a half-mil reduction. At the high end, depending on where we end up landing with total values, which we should know in about a month, what, what the fate of this bill is. As an aside, I talked with Auditor Kaitza today. He doesn't see how it's possible to get 2023 looped into this legislation. In a lot of ways, the, the, as the old phrase goes, the hay is in the barn. The values have already been submitted to the state. They got to start, they as in auditors around the state who are affected by this reappraisal, I think there's 41 counties, they have to start calculating rates and sending out tax bills in the middle of December. And this bill, even on the fastest pace possible, would have a reevaluation done by the High Department of Taxation in December. So not sure, no matter what happens with this bill, that '23 gets looped in. But assuming it does, we think that we still could drop a half a mil. That six, first, beg your pardon, that seven mils then, if you go from seven and a half to seven, would still allow us to collect nearly $42 million to pay our debt service. What that's going to do is exactly what you would expect mathematically. It would cut the savings to the community, a half mil, to about $3 million. And it would also make the savings on, an annual savings on a home, half of the same home value that you would have seen before. A $300,000 home would have been roughly 90 bucks, now it's going to be 4594. $400,000 would have been closer to 122. The upshot of all of this is, is we feel very confident that once we know exactly where we're going to land, that we will be able to recommend and bring forth legislation to the Olentangie School Board that will cut our debt service millage by no less than a half and no more than one mil. Moreover, we believe, when the time comes, and I know we're, we're discussing and talking about at subsequent board meetings, what a levy would look like in March for a bond issue, that we will continue to be able to follow through our commitment to our community with no additional millage on a bond issue, even after a half mil or a full mil drop. So if that sinks in for just a minute, that's exactly what it sounds like. We could lower debt service collections by a half a mil or a mil and still follow through on our commitment to the community when we do bond issues of not increasing the millage when that bond issue, assuming the bond issue passes, by adding in a half or any other portion of a mil.
So again, let me just recap. So coming into tonight, you were prepared to recommend one mil.
Correct.
Until House Bill 187 kind of created some uncertainty. The, why we're pausing a little bit is to let 187 kind of run its course, see what happens because the, what we didn't want to happen, we move forward with a mil, and then 187 happens, and then we've got to go ask for a half a mil back.
That's correct.
And so we try to do the right thing, consider all the potential outcomes, but kind of move when it's best so that we don't jerk people around, you know, with the millage. We do it once and, and we get it right. So I think it's a prudent path of action to just, because 30 days isn't going to affect the tax collection in the spring. So I think buying time or seeing where 187 goes, I think is prudent.
I want to thank Mr. Meyer, Dr. Fetti. We had some good conversations this morning, the kind of conversations where you continue to poke and prod at, why would we do this or why wouldn't we do that? Made a few phone calls to some fellow colleagues, obviously to Auditor Kaitza. That is correct. We, we ultimately decided that allowing a little more ripening of, for lack of a better word, this legislative process will result in a much better decision for the community. But felt like it was worth talking about this evening, that we believe pretty strongly that regardless of 187 or not, that we'll have a lower bound of a, of a half a mil and an upper bound of a full mil and still be able to accomplish what we normally do with no, no additional millage for our bond issue.
And Mr. O'Brien, when you say, I think you said, do the right thing, is that the phrase you use, like, the right thing is, we're not looking to collect a penny more than we need to run the district.
Totally agree.
Within financial.
Okay, and this is the debt service.
Right, 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 right.
Correct.
Keep that clear.
But I, I think it, it speaks to, if you've been paying attention to our board meetings here for the past several months, right? for the past several months, right? We had an agenda item a couple months ago about elementary school fees that we didn't collect this year, that, that previously we have collected, but through the diligence of your office, of the work that you're doing, you realize we can do this without that. We have a premium holiday that, you know, we, we realize, based on our good stewardship of these funds, that we can afford that for our staff. So really, the message here is.
And for the district.
And for the district, right?
It's both.
It helps both, right? But the, the message is, we are taking quite seriously our responsibility to be good stewards of the community's funds, you know, good stewards of, of, you know, our, our staff and all of those sorts of things, and staying on top of that so that we can identify these opportunities, you know, to, to make sure that we're in alignment with all of that. I mean, not every school district is doing this, right? And it, I really want to commend you for just the diligence on this. This is something you, you've certainly brought since the day you came here, and it's, it's been tremendous for us. But I hope the community understands just how powerful that diligence is on their day-to-day lives.
Thank you, and that's the goal. You know, ultimately, we want, as we said earlier, to produce a high-quality education, but do it in a very efficient manner.
Have, have we done a rollback before?
I'm not aware. I'll have to do some research off the top of my head. What we've always been able to do, I shouldn't say always, we certainly, within the past ten or twelve years, have been able to do our bond issues with no additional millage. Have we ever been able to kind of accomplish both? It would take a year like what we just went through, in reality, mathematically, that you have a high enough increase that you can roll your millage back and, at the same time, not have to go back up again when you pass a bond issue. That probably takes a pretty extraordinary year, twenty to thirty percent growth.
And the thirty percent growth is a combination of both increased value of existing structures as well as new builds coming on.
That is correct. That thirty percent number.
That's why it seems so large.
That's correct. That, that would be indicative of all in. That's exactly right. That's an all-in number. Any questions? So for the treasurer's action items, you know, pretty, pretty routine, the, the meeting minutes from September seventh, 2023, the August 2023 financials, and the amended twenty-four permanent appropriation resolution. And did I miss one item? Isn't there a adoption of a amended minutes where we were correcting? Is that correct?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, what, what, which board meeting was that, Mr. Meyer?
Uh, June eighth.
Okay. So that.
Oh, yeah, June eighth, yep.
That bullet point's up there, too. It's just in white font.
Mr. Jenkins, just a quick note. I think it's important for our community to realize that the transparency of your financial work is unbelievable, and you go above and beyond. And I'm specifically looking at scores of pages of the check register, everything to a dollar ninety-nine at Menards for a trimmer cable or, you know, whatever. You can look through and see every penny where it goes, and that's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
So I'd like to thank, you mentioned that, my assistant treasurers, Madison Ratliff and Patricia Heater. They, they do a great job in putting that together. We've actually had questions before, and we believe that, yeah, if, if we, we cut a check, the check register's there, let, let folks take a look at it. So thank you very much, and I thank them as well. Okay. Thank you all.
Very good. Thank you. Good work.
I don't have any participation.
Okay, so we do not have any public participation, so we'll move right into the board action items. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the board action items. Well, do we have, did that change?
Uh, it's a.
We do. Okay. So the only board action item is to, resolution to accept assistance from the OSBA, Legal Assistance Fund. This is relative to an amicus brief that they'd like to file. And remind me, on the top, which topic?
The, the current lawsuit on the, the.
The, the religious liberty.
Oh.
Yeah.
PD. Could I have a motion to approve the board action items, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, seeing none, please call the roll.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Jenkins, you're going to present the treasurer's action items.
Yeah, so items A through D, the minutes from nine seven, the amended minutes from six eight, more of a ministerial correction, August twenty-third financials, and the permanent appropriations for FY twenty-four.
All right, could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on the treasurer's action items? And again, we're not taking any action tonight on the millage rollback, but we would expect to take action on that in the future. So please call the roll.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Meyer, will you present the superintendent action items, please?
Yes, I'd like to present superintendent action items A through D for approval.
So moved.
Okay, a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion on these superintendent action items? All right, seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. All right, I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion to adjourn? All right, seeing none, please call the roll.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
All right, thank you, everybody. We are adjourned.